Okay, we are back into open session. We have a memorandum of agreement with the NDEA that we need to approve. That was in order to merge middle and high school schedules. The Narraguts Regional School District School Committee and the NDEA agree to enter in one-year pilot program effective July 1st of 2018, ending June 30th of 2019. During the one-year pilot program, the parties agreed to the following. High school, middle school will align their schedules utilizing a rotating seven drop-one schedule. There's an appendix back here, I believe, on that somewhere. Both schedules are served as templates and may be subject to minor revisions. Middle and high school lunches remain at 25 minutes. No splitting lunches. Elementary will remain at 30. High school will now have common planning time built into the schedules. No change to start and end time of the contractual day remains the same as the 2016-17 school year and reauthorized in 2017-18. Elementary school remains the same time it has for the 2016-17 and 2017-18 years. A scheduling committee will be formed with teacher input to changes to the schedule moving forward. And at the conclusion, these changes will cease and the parties will revert to the collective bargaining agreement. So on June 30th, this one-year agreement will expire. So I would take a motion to approve this.
Make a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll take a second.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? I'm going to do a roll call. Ms. Charterer?
Yes.
Ms. Tripolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Hughes says yes. Ms. Ropchak?
Yes.
Mrs. Mattson?
Yes.
And Mr. Forts left, but he and executive session had agreed. So I'll put that out there. That's unanimous that we have approved this memorandum of agreement. It is now signed.
And be passed down.
Student representative, I know it's been summertime. Is there any announcements that we want to have?
Okay.
Yep, come, okay, so.
No, it's okay.
Maybe Mrs. Basley you want to introduce?
Oh, sure. This is Emma Hughes, upcoming 11th grade. Can you believe it? And she has been very active with our student advisory council and our school council also. So happy to have her be a representative for us.
Okay, so hi, everyone. So nothing really eventful has been going on. Last summer break, you know, downtime, but lots of summer work has been handed in, stuff like that, which is coming from a student, you know. But freshman academy is next week. The advisor meeting is Monday and the freshmen come in on Tuesday. And band camp's going on right now, so all the marching bands getting ready. And yeah, that's about it.
If there are any freshmen that haven't signed up for freshman academy, can they still do so?
Yes, ma'am, they may. We did order some extra t-shirts, just in case we had a few extra. We can't guarantee we'll have enough. We did get two new freshmen yesterday, two new ones today. So I believe we're up to about 42 freshmen coming this year. So that's just almost 50 percent of the class, which is pretty good.
So they can contact the high school if they're interested and haven't signed up?
They can, or they can just come on Tuesday.
Perfect.
I believe we're starting with the ninth graders at nine o'clock.
Eight for the ninth grader, yeah.
Okay. Eight o'clock, I stand corrected.
Thank you. And our next appearance is by Rick Moulton for a facilities update. We've seen a lot of activity in the building.
Where?
Bleachers.
Why do you want me to sit there?
I see your beautiful face.
I got a kick out of Margaret saying that it was landscape, but it was relaxed.
I was doing that second sheet.
Yeah, and throw it my way. We had a little bit of a busy summer. And other than the normal stripping and waxing of floors, painting, which takes up a lot of part of the summer, we had a few other items. And I'll start from one end of the building and kind of work our way, I'll start at the north and work our way south. One of the projects that was just completed, well, we have hood vents over the Ellie Putnam gym. Basically what had happened over the years, I don't know why the building never had hood vents, but it didn't have hood vents. And a couple of the snowstorms you've had over the past few years, the snow builds up in the vents, the heaters can't turn on, it drips on the floor. We had brand-new gym floor that is warped. So we basically had a 15 by 60 section of high school floor completely ripped out. It's all insurance, by the way. It's not hitting the school district. And that is, should probably be completed. It's done right now. The floor is sanded. The first coat has been put on. We're going to have it painted probably within the next week. And seal coats go on, so realistically, it's probably going to be two or three weeks before that gym floor can be used. So hopefully, the gym classes will be able to go outside. That's one project we had. Also down in that section of the G floor last winter, we had massive water damage down there. G1, which is a room that juts out by itself, we had a water break in there. We came in one morning at 5:30 and there was water all the way down the hallway. So we had, again, another insurance claim. A company, Rebuildex, started the day after school ended and they gutted classrooms down there. One of the classrooms, all the floors, right to the wall studs, been totally rebuilt. It looks fantastic. They've done a great job on it. All-new cabinets in one of the classrooms. And they did their final coat of wax on the floor. Well, they're going to do a couple coats, but they waxed today. They're basically done. So there's another, another problem that we had. Along with that, we had up in the upper high school section, we had a room 140, which is right next to the band room. I walked in there one morning about the same time as the downstairs room blew and we had, I saw water coming out the hallway, said, "Not a good thing." I opened the door and it looked like a rainforest. Temperature was about 130 degrees in there. The ventilator blew and it was raining from the ceiling. So that room was stripped. And that room looks beautiful now. They've redone that. So that's another project we had through this summer. We, back up of that G1 room where the first break was, we have an airlock that goes outside. It's kind of a catch-22 because we have a fire. We have a fire suppression system out there that freezes. So the heater freezes, that freezes, that blows, that leaks. So I had Ray-Ban Electric install a separate heater just in that airlock this summer. So when it gets cold, that heater's going to go on to prevent that hopefully from ever happening again. We, myself and one of the crew, Brent, we, a year ago, we carpeted two rooms with carpet tiles. These are great, but when they start to pop, they're a mess and they constantly have to be re-glued. So we tried it last year on two classrooms. We put carpet tiles down. They came out fantastic. They made the whole season, school year, without shifting, without, with desks being dragged on. So I talked to Dr. C. and Anne Marie, and we did five more classrooms this year, this summer, including the former middle school principal's office and conference room next to Dr. C.'s office. I think that's what we're going to try and do with a lot of these older floor tiles is eventually is replace them with these carpet tiles. And they just, they've been holding up fantastic the first two years, so I'm very pleased with those come out. I think I mentioned before, and it's still an ongoing process, is the ongoing replacement of 3,600 fluorescent light bulbs in the school, where we got that deal through Gray Bar, and we got $56,000 worth of light bulbs, so $3,000. We've replaced probably close to 2,000 of them already. And I know Felicia has mentioned that our bills have dropped substantially, I guess, in our electric, so that was a good thing. We've added more hand dryers in the bathrooms instead of the paper towels. I did have a walk-through with the Board of Health over in Templeton last week, and she was thrilled that we're putting these hand dryers in. They're germ-free. And that, we put in four last year. We added four more this year. I don't think we have too many bathrooms that have paper towels anymore in them. And the savings in the paper towels has been phenomenal. Little kids are cute, but they don't know how to work the paper towel thing. So you walk in and they're all over the place. So now they're, they got a hand dryer that we're working with. I'd say probably one of the big things that everyone's, the most visible is the bleachers. You know, we had standing room only for our football team last year. Unfortunately, it'd like to think it's going to be standing room only again this year, except the bleachers are in. A little bit later than we anticipated, they're getting completed. Matter of fact, there has to be a little bit of paving to take place, where they had to cut out for the cement pads. That will take place the 23rd and the 24th next week. I talked to the paver. Hard to believe that anybody's putting behind in work, but with the rain, he's behind. Everybody's behind in the outside work. So he committed to me, he says, "I will have this done by the 23rd and 24th." And he's also doing a culvert out in front of the high school horseshoe loop that is, if you've seen, it's kind of breaking down. Also on the football field, we're adding new goalposts. Dr. C. and I talked, the Gardner area youth football is going to be using our lower practice field. It's beautiful turf. If you've never been down there to see the turf, it's beautiful, because it never gets used. And it's, you know, except for practices. So we're going to, we're going to have area youth football is going to use that on Sundays, Saturdays. Okay. And we're going to take one of the old goalposts that we take out anyways for baseball season, we're going to install that down on that field. So we do, there's already a set of goalposts down there at one end, so we'll have goalposts at either end. They can use that field. We're putting in a new set of goalposts, the single posts, college-style, pro-style. Those are in. The company was supposed to install them this week, but again, mother nature is not cooperating with them. They started to dig, but they haven't completed it. We have had a reduction in staff temporarily here at Phillipsville. One of our custodial employees put in his letter of resignation a couple of weeks, about a week ago, two weeks ago. He's no longer here. So we have announced that position internally first to see if anyone else, any of the other custodians are interested in it. And if not, we'll go outside for the position. But we're going to be all right for the opening. We're, one of the other guys is coming up and we're coming up to help get this school in order. I believe we'll be in good shape for opening. Floors are getting waxed, paint's getting done, rooms are getting rebuilt. As I say, I guess the last thing I said, Board of Health, we did a walk-through, high school, middle school, and went off without a hitch and got a clean bill of health from the Board of Health. I'm trying to get the billing inspector over and his boss, the Board of Health, has also told him to get a hold of me to. So I anticipate a walk-through with him, but I'm sure we're going to pass with that too, so. Any questions?
There are so many projects that honestly, it has been fun to watch, Rick.
A whirling dervish?
It's a whirling dervish. The other thing is that we are going to re-sign the snap check.
Oh, I forgot to mention that.
I mean, I know, we're going to have 42 different things going on.
Yeah.
And, you know, that'll also happen at some point, just finding.
We've contracted a company, I went through a search company, a company that searches for, you know, citing companies. And we secured a company out of Milford, Mass. with five-star ratings and all that. He's assured me he will have it done by the start of school.
And our football opening game is the seventh, so countdown's on.
Yeah, we'll be ready. The field's in good shape. It's, the bleachers are there. It's, you know, we'll be okay.
We'll be fine. It's going to be great.
If you haven't seen, that's not going to be in camp this week. The bleachers are beautiful.
What a difference.
Absolutely beautiful.
People are talking about them.
Yeah. And I think what impressed me the most is, I don't know if a lot of handicap people attend the games, but it's such a great access for them. It's all from the top. We had another area paved to add some more handicap parking spots up near the field. But the ramp access and the whole back section of the bleachers, 115 feet all the way across, is about a six-foot section that's all handicap accessible. And there's places for wheelchairs to sit and a place if someone has pushing a wheelchair that they can sit right next to them. I'm real happy with the way the bleachers came out. They did a nice job on it, so. The company was out of Florida that did the work. And they're coming up this weekend just to touch up a couple of things, good to go, so.
Yes, thank you. Thank you and your whole team for all the hard work.
Well, we're not done yet.
But you look so relaxed.
Oh, yeah, relaxed, yeah. It's all a facade.
Thank you. All right. Business managers' report. We had some reports on here, our end of year and then our first month.
Yeah, it's the end of the year. I don't know if anyone had the chance to look at it, but I included explanations on accounts just to give you the why it was what it was. And then Julys don't really tell you much, because there's not a lot of spending that you can see on them, but we might as well just get that ball rolling. So I don't know if anyone has any questions on June stuff that they want to ask about, or?
I didn't really see any shift from what was reported at our last meeting, so.
I think obviously the biggest issue is that, you know, we were 113,000, you know, because we had six maternity leaves. And that is just, you know, that, that's going to continue to happen as we get younger.
Yeah, it does.
And as nature dictates. So, but that's, you know, obviously we see that number, you know, we had six, that's a lot. I mean, obviously for, in one year. We had two down here at the same time.
Yeah, nobody's allowed to drink the water anymore.
Healthy babies.
Absolutely, oh, yep.
Anyone?
I'm changing mine.
Anyone have any questions on any of the numbers or form, Mrs. Kastner? Okay. School handbook approval. We had a link sent out with the handbook. And if everyone remembers, the handbook was being redesigned to have one common section for all schools. And then each school would have an appendix with their specific information. The document was about six feet high, and everybody had access to that. Was there, were there any comments, questions, concerns? And then I would take a motion afterwards to approve the handbook so that it could be approved for the students and the parents as well for the start of school. But did anybody have any comments they wanted to share at this point? Dr. Kazvent, did you have anything you wanted to add about it?
Just, it looks different, because we've taken all of the, I'll call it policy or procedure for most of the civil rights items out and added it to the main section. So that way, we are able, if we have to make a change or an update, it happens in one place and not five. A lot of what we had to do over the summer, and we can talk about that during my report, but is we had to clean up a lot of, you know, quite a few things from our visit from the Department of Ed. And most of it had to do with handbooks and updating of policies in terms of restraints and a lot of different things. So those things reside in the main, in the main body of the, so now, if you have three kids in the district at three different schools, that, those policies will all be in one place regardless of how many handbooks you may have individually. So it's a format that a lot of districts use, mostly regionals. And so we borrowed from that and we've, you know, we've updated what we needed to update.
I would take a motion to approve the handbook.
So moved.
I have a motion to add a second.
Second.
And I have a second. Any additional comments, questions? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the school handbook?
Aye.
That was unanimous. School improvement feedback last meeting, which seems like ages ago, we were all given copies of the school improvement plans to review. Just as an update, one of the changes that happened last year, 2016, I think, whenever they did a whole bunch of changes.
Oh, yeah.
The school improvement plans are approved by the superintendent with, I forget how they worded it, but he shares it with the school committee, so if we have any questions, comments or concerns. So at this point, if anyone had any questions, comments or concerns that they wanted to share back that they haven't already done with, I think we hit the direction was, if you had something, you could reach out to Dr. Kazvent or a principal. If there was anything else, we can share that. Otherwise, Dr. Kazvent will then take all this feedback and approve or request changes be made. So at this time, does anybody have any comments or questions?
Now, just on the road maps that exist under the object, that's not a building one, is it? Department, that's?
That's the district improvement.
That's your district. So I don't have any questions on the school.
Okay. All right, so it looks like we're at this point. And if anyone does, you know, if you do see something, obviously just reach out to Dr. Kazvent and we can go from there. But thank you. And thank you to all the principals and site councils for all the very hard work that's done on these district improvement pla, school improvement plans, because it's not an easy thing to handle. And it's wonderful that they're fitting the same format of our district improvement plan and follow the same logic through them. It really makes it much easier to read, so appreciate all the hard work and share that with your Advent team and push that down and out. But thanks, that would be very nice. Thank you.
Certainly advise much more than in the past.
Yeah.
So that's cool.
All right, next on the agenda is the out-of-state field trip update. We have previously approved the high school trip to Nicaragua, and there has been some updates to that. Dr. Kazvent, I don't know if you want to throw it?
Yeah, I'll just start it off and I'll let Ms. Bassel take it from there. So, you know, civil unrest happens.
Every winter.
You know?
Especially my house.
I was going to say, maybe in some of our own homes. But with all seriousness, this DRC was keeping a very close eye to a lot of, a lot of the issues that were happening in Nicaragua. And the State Department actually then lowered its rating or its advisory, or increased its advisory, raised its advisory to, you know, was basically probably not a good place to go vacation or to travel to. So way ahead of that, we were about ready to talk about it, honestly. And I'd received a few emails and we're trying to figure out, and Mr. DRC had already reached out to, and the company also reached out to him as well, saying, "Oh, boy, but we have this other place." And I'll, actually, you know, Ms. Bassel was nice enough to come on out here today. So I'm going to have her talk a little bit about what the new plan is. But ultimately, we're going to, you know, we're going to switch gear, or the request is, is to switch gears, switch locations, and the cap, let's see, to, I don't think I can say this, can, how do you announce?
I think it's Camau.
Okay, Camau in the Dominican Republic, which is about four hour drive from the capital of Santo Domingo. And Winston School students have been going there for years, doing the same type of work. He is familiar with Winston School. He used to work there. His wife still works there. So he has a very, you know, very high familiarity with the project and the project. But if, I don't know if you have anything else to add?
Just that with Mr. DRC and I, we, you know, stayed in contact. And the company Bridges to Community was actually the ones that were reaching out to Mr. DRC to say that, you know, they were pretty sure they were going to change it. They had a meeting, made a decision that they needed to do so. They're actually not sponsoring any trips to Nicaragua until spring 2020, I think, or something like that. Or at least for the whole year 2019, they're not sponsoring anything. So moving to the Dominican Republic, the Bridges to Community has already been working with the same, doing the exact same program in the DR. And so the students will still have the exact same experience, the price will be the same. They will still be participating in service learning and working with the community and living within the boundaries of that community and learning about the culture. They'll have a little bit of time to, you know, a couple of little touristy things. I think it's really just like a day and a half for that. But, so they'll have an opportunity to see some of that also. But it's exactly the same, just changing the venue in the interest of safety for our students. And the adults, just saying.
And them too.
Does anyone have any questions, Dr.? I would just like to take a motion that we approve the change in venue so that this can move forward and there's no question on the table whether or not we're approving this. So I would take a motion to approve the change. I have a motion to approve the change to the Dominican Republic. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? It was unanimous.
So the one thing I will just tell you as a follow-up is Mr. DRC did send a letter to all of the participants and their parents to let them know that this was possible coming up and that they were making the change, so that they had the opportunity to say they didn't want their child to participate in the change. But he has gotten no negative feedback about that. If anything, he's gotten positive and appreciation for, you know, looking out for the safety.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Superintendent goals and mid-cycle evaluation. Haven't really received many back yet, so what I'd like to propose is that everybody takes a couple of more days to fill out their mid-cycle evaluation forms. Did notice, I was talking to Ms. Tripolo, she said, "There's no place for comments on here. So if you do have comments you want to add, just either put them on the back or on the bottom. I will collect these and put them, I will do this so that we don't have to worry about this time. I'll do it."
Just a further comment. When you do the evaluation, the members do, it says on target, off topic, off target and not started. Those categories were difficult for me to, to check off. So is it all right if there's a, if somebody puts another category there? In the, or do you have to stick to those three?
I think because this is the evaluation tool that we approved upfront, we'd probably just stick with what's there if we want to modify it the next time around, so that it's maybe more user-friendly. I have noticed, I've heard some chatter on the, through MASC, that there's a lot of people not very happy with some of these forms and the rigidity of them. So I don't know if you can make it work and maybe just put some comments there this time, and then we can try and redesign and make it more applicable to us and what we want it to say. Does that make sense?
Okay, that's fine. Margaret, is this the one that was online?
It was just three pages.
They were hard copy. I think she's got the school committee online.
Yeah.
Oh, that was the school committee one, okay.
Yes, the school committee one was online, yeah.
Was this one out a long time ago? And did I give you a copy of it or something?
No, this was, I think we got these the last meeting.
Oh, okay, I wasn't at the meeting, okay.
Oh, that's why, okay. So we'll get you a copy. And if anyone else needs a copy, just let us know and make sure you get a copy. Because if we can get these back, what would be ideal is we get them back before, we are meeting next Wednesday here. It would be nice, because we do want to give Dr. Kazvent some feedback, especially if there's anything that we see that, you know, you might want to change up as far as direction. So if everyone can do this in the next couple of days and turn it into central office, even if you have to, you know, fax it over, take a picture and email it or whatever, send it to Susan and she'll filter it all through. And we can try and get some results put together for next week.
I'll put back up the timeline that I produced, I produced the timeline for those. And I, I'll just put it up in the shared folder, because I, you know, I don't have a, I don't have a copy, so that way you can see what I was, where I was on.
Could we share that folder when we get done? Could you share that out to everybody again, so they don't have to go look for the original email?
Because there's no timeline here.
All of that's in the documentation folder. That was, because I know it was shared out a while ago.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
I will, I'll put that, we'll reshare the folder.
Perfect.
So that way you can see the evidence and the timeline and all that stuff that we talked about.
Appreciate that, because it makes it easier for us.
I think we all took July off.
Yeah, I know, I did.
I didn't even see Rick.
Because you weren't around.
Tuesday.
Next up is our school committee self-evaluation. Five out of seven of us have filled it out, although I didn't check to say, today to see. What I'm going to do is I will push out the link one more time. If you haven't filled it out, go ahead and fill it out. Otherwise, we'll just use the data that was submitted. And just remember, you have to be logged into your school email account when you open it, otherwise it won't acknowledge that you have authority to see it, because it's on the school Google Drive. I'll be able to automatically, hopefully, pull out all of the data so that it's consolidated and we can see the results. We talked about setting up a workshop so that we could go over the data. We had a couple of things that we wanted to talk about tonight, about setting dates up for workshops. One was our goal-setting, which would come out of that data. We talked about a dive into our district improvement plan and an update on where we are. We did that about a year ago, so it's time to do that again. We also can talk about some numbers and some budget things at the same time, as either of those two events happen. So what I'd like to do is, and I guess we could probably, it might be best to do it through a doodle. Susan, if you wouldn't mind sending out a doodle if September, does that sound like a good? Because we're, I'm still not ready to fully engage an adult yet.
Around when in September, like middle?
Yeah, I mean, does that, everybody feel like the second and third weekends maybe? Like we did a Saturday like we did last time? Maybe send that out and see what consensus is about availability and we can go from there. And if we can get the first one set up, because I think we'll probably have to do two of them over the timeframe, we can pick a second date after we meet at the first one and we can work through these issues. And depending on availability, maybe we could see if we can get a facilitator from MASC to come and work with our goals, because they do offer us that service, someone to come. Public input, do we have any public input? Seeing none, NDEA, so we don't really have an NDEA rep, so, which is okay, because they're resting up before the, calm before the storm. School committee comments, any comments from the school committee? I see none. Okay, surplus items, we have some surplus technology items. There was a list put together by Mr. Wakefield of a whole sorted slew of technology items that are non-functional and they've been taken out of service due to age, unreparable, it can no longer be supported by the current systems. And once we approve their surplus, they'll go to authorized recyclers for environmentally responsible, secure recycling. So I would entertain a motion to approve the surplus items as presented.
I make a motion, we approve the surplus items.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? It was unanimous. Okay, superintendent report, I will turn this floor over to Dr. Kazivant.
Thank you. I'm gonna dovetail really two of the items. So I wanna talk about enrollment and I'm gonna talk about school choice. Really, almost in the same breath, because one obviously affects the other. So, we, over the past, well, for three years, but seriously, really, very seriously, we've been watching and collecting data on our enrollment. And exactly what are we talking about? Well, we talk about how many kids are moving back in the area. We know where they go, where they, at best, where they tell us they're going. We know exactly how many kids go to Monty Tech, we know where they come from, we know where they live. We keep a lot of data about who comes and who goes. School choice, quite frankly and honestly, and I've said this before, has really been for me a passion, because it's just interesting about why school choice happens and where do they come from, and why is it that when it goes bad, why is that? And when it goes well, why is that? And where do they come from? So, we collect a lot of data. And thanks to Susan and our tech department, when someone now enrolls or just applies to be considered for school choice, it's done online and through Google Forms and Google Docs and all those great things. That information is then, we start tracking it very closely about grade and town, et cetera. So, this is really the one piece of the project. The other piece that we've, we're trying to get, you know, a better handle on is why do they leave? And creating surveys and sending those out to those folks. But when it comes to population, when it comes to student enrollment, we have to, we have to make sure that we remember the two very different kinds. There is the foundation enrollment, which is every school-aged child that lives in either Templeton or Phillipston who goes to a publicly funded school. That does not necessarily mean they come here to narrate Ganza. That is your foundation budget, that is what Chapter 73 drives off of, or one of the many, one of the, one of the three keys of how, what we receive from money, okay? And then, there is of course, our school enrollment. How many kids physically do we have in seats? And, you know, we've talked quite a bit about that, obviously, and about those two things. But, so when we last, you know, left our hero, we were at fourteen hundred and thirty-six kids in June. So when we were done, and it all set in time, and this number goes like this all the time, it really, really does. Anywhere up to, it's like the stock market at times. Game three, lose five, game six, lose one. It just really, honestly, like that. So, the tech department, but specifically Chelsea, and I keep a very detailed sheet in which she updates every month, okay? And we know exactly, at that moment in time, how many kids are where? How many enrolled kids are where? And so, so we have it, we do, we break it down by how many residents and school choice kids, literally per class. And, and what that does is that helps us watch very closely our numbers, because as of right now, we have fourteen hundred and thirty-nine kids as of today. This number, I can tell you folks, you might as well not even write it down. It will definitely change tomorrow, it will look different on Friday, it will look much different next Wednesday. This is not a time of year to even pay attention to this, because it is all over the place. We have people coming and going, you know, whatever. By October 1, we really start taking it seriously. But right now, as of six o'clock, we had fourteen hundred and thirty-nine students enrolled in this district. Now, of that, two hundred and sixty-one of them are school choice, okay? One thousand one hundred and seventy-eight of those are residents, okay? So, when you equal that out, you know, you come up with fourteen thirty-nine, that's eighty-two percent of our kids of this district are from the district and the other eighteen percent are school choice. When you look across the schools, we have not accepted a school choice child at BES. I think we're going on now two and a half years, okay? So we, why? We are full. So we have started to see the fruits of that labor. The fourth grade class has one hundred and one kids in it right now. And if I'm looking at the fourth grade, I wanna make sure I get this right, yep. We only have nine school choice children in the fourth grade at BES, okay? So that's why we are not accepting school choice children at Baldwinville Elementary, because we can't take the chance, honestly, of filling that class best capacity. We're at roughly, we're averaging twenty, we'll call it twenty-five and a half kids a class in that right now. So, so that's why, so we're talking that there are two hundred and forty-four kids at BES and that means that's eighty-seven percent of those kids are from the residents and thirteen percent are school choice, that we probably accepted, and I already know this, that we accepted when they were kindergarten and first grade, okay? When we look at Templeton Center, we watch that number very closely. Kindergarten is a number that is constantly in flux, as you can possibly imagine. So we don't do a lot of school choice there lately, because it's been so volatile. Eighty-nine percent of our kids at Templeton Center, or a hundred and sixty total, are residents and only nineteen are school choice, which makes up eleven percent, okay? When we look at Phillipston, we have a grand total of a hundred and sixty-four students. Now, that includes roughly seventy-some odd pre-K. But of that though, a hundred and thirty-one of those are resident, which are eighty percent, and thirty-three are school choice. And so, you know, so we have, if you, if you're watching the trend, we roughly are about eighty, eighty percent of our total population in all of our schools are, so far, as we go through, are residents. So, middle school, again, this is where we, so we last, oh gosh, I don't even know when we took the vote, but we identified where we could take school choice children. There was literally a sprinkling that we could take in the sixth grade and we merely shut it off, because we received such a push. Fifth grade, nope. We weren't gonna take a child in the fifth grade as a school choice student, because we're up to a hundred and twenty-six kids at this point in the fifth grade. So, we took them in the eighth grade this year. That was the eighth grade in the high school, right? So, and as of right now, let me just be, we are, yeah. So we have thirty-one, just, I'm going to the eighth grade. But thirty-one of those kids are school choice in the eighth grade and eighty-three are residents, for a hundred and fourteen. Okay, we like that number. That's roughly twenty-two point eight per grade. But if you look at the entire middle school, we're sticking with that eighty-twenty split. Three hundred and seventy-nine of those kids at the middle school are residents and ninety-five of them, you have this all, by the way, you're gonna have to flip up and back, folks, because I couldn't put it on one sheet, which is impossible. But ninety-five of those are school choice, okay? The high school, over the last couple of years, we have not seen a lot of school choice kids come into the high school. They migrated there. Over the last three years, we've been keeping track of this. If you were a school choice child, most of the time you came in, you were school choice at some, at some point in your elementary or middle school career. That has changed dramatically this year. So, currently, right now, we have three hundred and forty kids total at the middle, at the high school and growing. Two hundred and sixty-four of those, or seventy-eight percent, are residents and seventy-six are school choice, and that's twenty-two percent. Now, these are all numbers that you have before you. The issue is that we have to pay attention to the sins of our fathers, as the saying goes. We have currently, I'm gonna look to Susan, eighty kids on the waitlist at this point in time. Oh, who knows? I don't, we honestly, at some point, really just become, it becomes like this white noise of a number, because, but they do put the applications in, we're at seventy or eighty kids roughly. She'll give me the exact number in a minute. Most of those are elementary, most of them kindergarten, first grade. And, next thing you know, you know, we are, we, since, since when we started keeping track of this, we're well over a hundred and twenty kid, more kids of school choice in this district than we were, say, two years ago at this point in time. What does that mean? I don't know. That's why we keep these numbers. We know that Ash West doesn't take school choice anymore. They're not. So, look, we would be foolish if we didn't identify the fact that one of the desired places to land, which is Ash West, is not taking a lot of kids. The, because they learned about, you can take too many school choice children because of finance. You can't, it's, it's a, it's a glass floor and it can break very easily, because if you rely too much on school choice money, as we discussed through our entire budget project, that it becomes money that you become, you tend to rely on. And all of a sudden, if those numbers, like the stock market, fall, for whatever reason, you have already relied on it, and so now, you have no, there's no recourse other than to go to, say, the municipality or the, you know, or the towns and say, "I need X because." And we, from the very beginning and predecessors, don't, we don't, they do it the right way, we do it the right way. We do not put a lot of salaries in school choice for that reason. If this goes upside down, I still need those salaries. There is the catch. If I have a class of, I'll pick one. Let's look at third grade Mrs. Fawcett. There are a grand total of twenty-two kids right now in Miss Fawcett's classroom. Sixteen of those are residents and six are school choice. Let's pretend that we were paying Miss Fawcett's entire salary out of school choice. If those six kids, those six school choice kids were to leave tomorrow, for whatever reason, well, we have six less, none, don't we? We still need Miss Fawcett. That happens very quickly. It becomes a fool's errand. So all of a sudden, you're saying, "Well, I need Miss Fawcett, she's only got fourteen." We're gonna be fourteen kids. You're not gonna spread, say, fourteen kids in the other four classrooms, they're already at twenty-five, twenty-six. So it becomes very hard now not to carry Miss Fawcett, right? So now to bring what we call to the local side. So how does this all factor into our enrollment? Well, our enrollment is strong, so here's the, you know, here's the summary. Our enrollment is, we're right out where we were last year. But what we need to be very cautious and cognitive of is that we're roughly, as of right now, I would say we're probably two, we're about, about twenty-eight residents short of where we were last year, at this point in time. Why? The graduating class of two thousand and eighteen had the most residents, okay? They had, they won, they've got the gold star. They had the most residents in a grade, until, they have just been beaten out, because grade six has a hundred and one residents right now. Twenty school choice children, one hundred and one residents, okay? So they win, they get a star, they win. Sorry, class of two thousand, nice to know you, right? Two thousand and eighteen's out, right? It's a class of twenty, twenty, whatever. So, the fact is that what I'm going to say to you is going to seem odd, but I, my recommendation is that we hold pat. I don't think that we should take, I think we should close school choice across the board, until our numbers settle to whatever. The next three weeks of August are almost funny to watch. I could literally open up tomorrow, we could be down a hundred students. I'm not, it will never be that bad, but it gets really wacky this time of the year. It's as fast as poor Chelsea can enter these kids in or take them out, so we never know. But my recommendation is that we, what I'm asking the board to consider is to close school choice. We're at two hundred and sixty school choice children. I think that is, or, I'm sorry, two hundred, I'm just, just, yep, two hundred and sixty-one as of right this second. We're, we were at two oh two when we took the snapshot, I believe, two, I have to look at my old sheet in October. We cannot make up the loss of residents, in my opinion, financially, with school choice children. But to that extent though, if we are, if we are required or that we are, that we have to count on this money to operate, then I'm gonna have to keep this number. So that's not a, that's not a, I talked to Carter today, as a matter of fact, we had lunch and we were talking about school choice. When I'm forced to keep up school choice numbers in order to, for the operation budget, that is where we could go very, very wrong. I will tell you that it is tantalizingly, I wanna just take all eighty, right? I do, I just wanna go eighty. I'm gonna, I just wanna take three hundred of them and just stuff them somewhere. We'll be fine, you'll be fine, Miss Fawcett with thirty-eight, or whatever. But the fact is that because, you know, go ahead, do the math, right? Seventy times five thousand, right? We have to be smart about it and I think that right now, we might be at that set. I'm not saying that I won't be coming to you in September, October, saying, "Wow, we really leveled out, you know? Once everybody got in and out, we have some space." But right now, I'm worried about this. And by the way, parents are waiting for us to tell them whether they're accepted or not. We have to let them off the hook. We have, because they're making plans for their children and they're calling, poor Susan, and they're, you know, and it's, we wanna, we need to do the right thing and say, "Look, we're closed. We're closed for right now." Did we think we were gonna be here in two thousand and fifteen? I don't know, but we are, we're here now. And it's not, it's a great position, we're a place that people want to be. We just have to, I think we're gonna have to see what that really means in terms of looking to the other side.
Thank you, Dr. Kazivant. Questions for Dr. Kazivant on this? So, just looking at the numbers, obviously, as you've laid out, our Templeton K to, no, it's four here. Already, I'm thinking ahead to five.
Yeah, sure has.
You know, have fairly, you know, have higher numbers in the classrooms than Phillipston does. You've already spoken the fact that high school, we really haven't received a lot of requests for school choice.
Until this, until this year, yeah, then all of a sudden, they've, they've come, where?
We've got about twelve, I think I counted.
That's twelve, that's on the waitlist right now?
No.
No, that's actually accepted.
We've accepted, but we do have a couple that we're holding right now that are waiting for them to school.
And as far as Phillipston goes, because we do have some smaller class sizes there, do we have any requests or opportunity or, because I know the other things that have happened in the past is we go ahead and we take the school choice and then all of a sudden, the family with seven kids moves in.
Right.
And, you know, and then the next family with four kids, and all of a sudden, we have, you know, thirty new residents. And that's a risky place to be in September, where we're already struggling to manage a budget that's very, very tight. Yes, we've added a couple of teachers, but we don't want to push the tipping point, where then we have to figure out how are we going to fund additional resources if we get there.
Yeah, and so to the point about Phillipston, we, someone had said, "Look, I took second grade, well, we're not accepting." And we'll say, "Well, we have, we have a space or a seat available at Phillipston," for example. And on more than a few occasions- And on more than a few occasions, I couldn't name them at this point, how many, but they've said, "Yes, oh, that'd be fantastic." Or they've come down to look, or they said, "No, we're really kinda thinking about BES, but we're..." So, whatever. But so our, our, our opportunity at Phillipston, we will say, we don't have an opportunity, say, in Ballinville. So we do that. We do that quite a bit, but we try to keep those numbers. You know, here's the thing, just because grade two is averaging roughly, let me just use twenty-three, that doesn't mean that we automatically put twenty-three kids, we try to put twenty-three kids over in Phillipston. That's, that's not how it goes. But we know that that's a good bar for us. So if, if people were to want to, then we, we'd go, "Okay, we would raise that up to twenty-three," because that's what the other second grades are. And as you can tell, we, you can tell by looking at the numbers that, you know, when you only, we have ninety, ninety-three kids in the second grade, and that's, you know, that's a lot. Grade three is eighty-eight. But if you look at those school choice numbers, you look at how many kids per class, the second grade has what, nine, ten, thirteen total kids out of ninety-three? We, we've been very careful, very careful. Those kids, I guarantee, almost, I have to guarantee, they, they had to come in at some point in kindergarten because we have to, we, we have to hedge our bets. We have to make sure that there's, we're not creating this unsafe environment to make five grand. I hate to, I hate to put it kind of all so bluntly, but our job is to educate kids and, and do it well. And we do do it well. We can't do that well if our class size is over twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. I mean, that's, that's just not, that's just not good, it's just not sound, you know, logical. Obviously, it's not very logical, so, but it's, it is a balance. And it's tempting, right? It's tempting.
As long as the offer is made to, for Phillipston, because you have a difference in each classroom of four to five kids, so...
Right. Yep, and we do. And every time that we get an elementary request, kindergarten, we've had to, okay, kindergarten, they'll, they'll go, "Yes." I mean, I could've said, "Look, we gotta..." "Yes." I mean, they'll just take whatever. But we've actually just said to say no across the board, because we get so many, now people are still registering their, if you look, there's a, and you don't, please don't read, but, names up, but there are, there are four names, or three names now on, that, that need home rooms. Well, folks, those are moving, those are not school choice. Those are residents. How many residents did move, uh, came in at one time at the high school? Just very recently.
This week?
Yeah.
Residents?
Yeah.
We had two, a week and a half ago, I think. We had two come in today.
Yeah.
I think we had two yesterday.
See them, so we, we are seeing this across the board. So, look, as much as I try, they're still pouring into BES, but they're residents. There were seven new homes put on the market. Thank you, because we've been talking to the realtors. And the people, that we're, we're told is that families are buying these houses. We say, "Well, you know, gee, he's kind of..." Like, "Oh, a family." You know? It's like, "Okay."
Yeah, and that's the trend.
And that's the trend.
You've seen, is that we are, that Templeton and Phillipston are...
Seventeen applicants for school choice for the high school.
Oh, seventeen, sorry.
Yeah, I just...
Total?
Yes.
That we've taken?
No, there was two that are on hold, so we've taken fifty, but seventeen have applied.
Okay.
So, so you're looking for us to make...
My recommendation is for right now until, until we meet again, say, in September. If we could just freeze, it, it's only gonna be taken at the eighth grade in the high school now anyway, because that's the only places that are even available until September. That would, I think that would make us all feel a little bit better because of the numbers that are pouring in.
I would entertain a motion for someone about school choice if they would still like.
A motion, we stop school choice for now.
Until next month.
Until next month. Or until we meet again.
Thank you. So the motion is to close school choice for now and revisit it when we next meet. And we can review it at that point. I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Any questions or comments?
Are we still keeping the high school and middle school open at that point, or we're closing it all down?
I'd like to close it down. The recommendation is to close it down until September. Until I, until my number, until we really know what we have.
Yeah, so motions, close it, every grade. So we won't take anyone else at this point.
Closed right now.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing no further, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? That was unanimous. So we will close school choice and revisit this once we meet again. And I'm sure you'll give us another enrollment update as we keep going.
By September, yeah, I will, we will feel better at our numbers, yeah.
And it'll be awesome, I mean, with, with, with the number of houses on the market and families moving in. I really have high hopes for this area as far as residents and the economy turning around, so...
Absolutely. Absolutely.
As long as they can get down their roads.
All right, so that was your enrollment in school choice. You have, we have stamping updates?
Okay, so we would be here quite a while. So in, in Rick's terms, he's been very busy, you know, fixing everything, him and his crew. The principals and central office, etc., have been very busy filling what only was a few openings, quite frankly, in the very beginning. It really was. And what happens is they cascade into other openings. So I've given you a sheet of, of, of just new or changed positions that we, that either, that either was an interim position or an actual new hire. I'm gonna go through a couple of these, just a couple. So, because some of these are gonna seem like, "What is that?" So the very, on the very top, you'll see Transition Specialist slash Career Coach, which is new position added, and her name is Kathleen Wallace. When our CPR review took place, we were out of compliance in our intensive special needs classroom that Mr. Donovan runs, because we had kids who are within forty-eight months of each other, more than forty-eight months in, in same classroom. And that is one of the four top no-no's. You can't have, for example, a sixteen-year-old and a thirteen-year-old in the same classroom, in a special needs classroom. Matter of fact, you can't have it in any classroom, the forty-eight. So, you know, we, we, we have, we have quite a span of, of students that, that fall into this category. So we, we absolutely had to, if you think of it this way, Mr. Donovan, right? So, yeah, Mr. Donovan, and so, you know, we had to basically provide or create a class before Mr. Donovan. So if you think of it one way, life skills two, life skill, life skills one. Because we're gonna run into this, by the way, forever. You, you know, you have kids, we, we, we keep our kids almost in that program up to their twenty-two, nineteen, twenty-two. Well, you can imagine that if I've got a sixteen-year-old, I, I can't possibly put him in Mr. Donridd's room because of the forty-eight month. But we have to provide those type of services. So that is a new position, and it was created because of our, because of the, you know, the feedback, I'll call it that, from the state. We're, the, okay, I'm gonna go through a couple of these real quick, but Ms. Clark, who will be retiring in September? I'm sorry, is it September?
It's October.
Is it October? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So we, we hired, you know, a new, a new hire who will be coming on board, you know, immediately at the high school. The media specialist, as you remember, was a major, well, you know, they found that to be a very major, the Niasse folks who came out. And, but we do need it because the library was going to be shut off. And I explained that last, last month, they were gonna just shut off our ability to do any type of research, or anything like that. So it was very important. So we did hire the media specialist. The fifth grade position, the sixth grade position, you've known, we've talked a lot about because of the, of just the numbers. Lauren Witz, Lauren Witz, retired. We hired Mr. Duncan Hurst into the middle school music. A lot, then what you're gonna see is that, you know, we had retirement, Ms. Scott retired. And so we hired Patricia Stacy, who will end up ultimately at the middle school. Dr. Cushing, as you know, resigned and is now a high school principal. And so we hired Ms. Mary Lefrenney as an interim middle school principal. I'm just trying to find, just going through some of the big, Ms. Fredrickson left to go work in Foxborough. And we, so there was a hire. Denise LeBlanc transitioned. And you can see, I've given you some of these off to the right. But I think probably one of the bigger ones that we, was Net North resigned to go work at Ash West. And it was, that was, oh God, the first week of August. And we, we were very lucky to secure Ms. Emily Saltisik as the interim principal. And by the way, these folks are gonna come meet you in September. We might need two meetings, but, given all the people, but we've, you know, we, we were gonna do that, of course. And again, we're gonna move Terry, Ms. Labonte down to Phillipston, at least for the year. She's gonna, she's gonna take over or assist the early childhood program, which is really the pre-K. And there's a lot that goes along with being the pre-K or early childhood. And she's also gonna fill in as the special education teacher, because Ms. Pittman, Libby Pittman, transferred to the fifth grade position at the middle school, who will then turn right around and come back here as the fifth grade teacher when we do the reorg. Okay? So that's a lot of people to be moving, obviously. And if you look at new people, it didn't start off that way. You know, when we started off at the beginning of the year, we knew that we had a couple retirements and we had a couple new positions, but then, you know, as things happen, they happen. And the principals and everyone did an outstanding job, I think, filling all of these positions, because, you know, it's hard. It's hard to do.
What's currently left open at this point to Phillipston?
Right now, I believe, and I think they're on the final stages of the attendance secretary, an ABA para, or two of those, yes, I'm sorry, yeah, two ABA paras. And if I've got my story straight, I believe that's, that's it, as of right now.
Yeah. Lots of movement.
And a custodian.
Yeah.
Thank you. And that's, I didn't have, I didn't even have a chance to put this on the list, but you're right. Yes, a custodian, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions about any of these?
Yeah, we have a few kids hanging around, you know, fourteen hundred and thirty-nine currently. And we've gotta probably educate them. So that's what we'll be discussing during our retreat. Opening day is next Thursday, and, well, so, so that's just us, that's the retreat. But then all the staff come back for their two P, their mandatory PD for next Thursday and Friday, opening remarks, and me on Thursday, and a few surprises in terms of, well, for lunch, we're not gonna talk, we're not gonna tell anybody. Did we tell anybody about what we're doing for lunch, Susan?
No, we haven't.
All right, then we're not gonna do it now, so, all right, so. You'll have to come and listen to me talk and then find out what we have excited. All right. So that happens, and then, then of course, the first day of school is the twenty-seventh of, the twenty-seventh, first day of school, right? Twenty-seventh, which is the best day ever. So that'll kick off our first day. And I don't know, do you have any questions about any of that?
School committee invitation to your admin retreat?
So that went out via email. At some point, I think we have one or two RCPs, I don't, I don't remem, I think, we have one. And, but we'd love to have more, you know? Come on down, we'll be at the PACC. No, the Bar Saxon folks. So come on down, and...
An opening day?
Opening day, you'll receive another invitation, of course, but that'll, that'll be for, I mean, we'll be putting that out, but just, you'll see the, we're gonna put, we'll, we'll certainly send out the itinerary for our train. We already have that done. The staff already have it. Everyone, the staff have what they're, what they, they know what they're doing on Thursdays and Fridays. So, but we'll certainly be sending out anybody, you know, as soon as Susan, you know, gets to it.
She looks so relaxed.
Which will be receiving, so just let us know so we know what to introduce you. But we'll, we'll invite the, we'll, we'll be doing that whole, you know, the, the rollout and the invitations for, to everybody, you know, of the officials.
You're inviting me back, I may touch your record last.
Absolutely, yes. We absolutely love that.
No coffee for you.
No coffee.
All right, and school open houses and visiting information?
So we have, I just, oh, here we go. I got it. Right here. And I had to, oh, God, where are you down? Okay, so, open houses are, for Phillipston, is September fourteenth, five-thirty to seven. Ballinville Elementary, September eleventh, five-thirty to seven. Will this all go out, folks, too? But this is just hot off the press, let's be. Templeton Center is September eighteenth, five-thirty to seven. And the middle school will be September twentieth, that's five-thirty to seven. So that'll all go out, but that's, that's what we, we're, that's what we have, that's what we figured out. Also, we have meet the principals, plural, I believe, and I'm gonna have to double-check this. The twenty-first and twenty-second kid, I believe. So the twenty-first, I believe, is, because they, they had to change the dates up. So what am I talking about? Well...
Yeah, we have Ms. Saltisik and Ms. Bashan on the twenty-first. And then I think Ms. Lefrenier...
Yep.
Ms. Lefrenier is on the...
On the twenty-second.
On the twenty-second. I don't have that in my calendar.
That's probably gonna be the letters which are being sent out this week from the principals, welcoming everyone to the new school year. But we'll, we'll upload, we'll, you know, we'll send that out as well. It'll be in the Kiva, you know, obviously, it's our condition. So for folks, if they would like to come meet. Or maybe not.
No, because of the, the Kiva, I don't think the Kiva's gonna be used, but we're gonna have the elementary one in the lobby, the middle TC middle school lobby. I'm not sure where Ms. Lefrenier's...
Yeah, we'll figure out, we'll, we'll get the locations.
Was that, that was done... August or September?
August.
August, okay.
That's just to meet the, just so we look at, yeah, that's next week, yeah. So lots happen next week, so...
Wait, what time is the, meet the principals on?
So the twenty-first...
And then the twenty-second.
And the twenty-second. I will send, it's like five for staff and six for parents.
Because we're gonna be here, right?
Yeah, so that, that, what happened was that this happened, but they had already scheduled that, so I, I, I left that alone. I mean, you know, but, yeah, it is what it is. I didn't dare, well, there's not enough days, there's not enough days left of this, you know, of summer at this point, so...
Yeah. Okay, so now, yeah. We also have August twenty-first, that evening, our freshman academy is, we are inviting the parents, but we're also inviting all parents in case anyone has questions as far as the new schedule. And that's at five o'clock in the library.
So we'll put all, we definitely put that on Facebook. We'll, we'll, we'll push that out, all that information out to everybody, to, to the, globally, we'll push that out.
Thank you. Any, anything else that you would like to report on? Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Kazman? We haven't kept him busy enough, I don't think.
No.
Next up, we have curriculum instruction, which Ms. Colise reports on. She was gonna give us a nice summer update, I'm sure we'll be okay with.
Yeah, okay. Okay. So this summer, we had nine different days of curriculum work, spanning various content areas and grade levels. We had high school, middle and high, really, Algebra One realignment for three full days in July. We had teachers come in and work on really updating our Algebra One curriculum to fully meet the new standards. And they're gonna be using the Engage New York, which we hadn't done in Algebra One yet. And they did quite a bit of detailed work to make sure that kids are going to be seamlessly kind of transitioning through. That was really good work. We had two high school teachers come in for two days, two long days, and do some mapping for environmental science. And as we're doing all this work, I'm working with teachers to make sure that they were all getting kind of on the same template that we're using and things are in the same format. We have a common discussion about what curriculum is and so forth. And then we had elementary ELA teachers, a whole team of teachers come in for four full days, following up the work that they did last summer and really taking that work to, to the next level and really thinking about what it means for instruction in their classroom and identifying maybe some resources they need for their libraries and so forth. So those were really productive curriculum writing days. We had a PBIS leadership team, so that's Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports. And that's a district-wide initiative we have from pre-K through twelve. It kind of rose up as a grassroots, you know, staff interest in PBIS, a lot at the middle school, but also in the elementaries. And when we talked about coordinating that district-wide, all of the school principals were really on board with that. It really fits very well in with our social emotional learning district goal. And so we had training of a leadership team. Actually, we had five days, we had three full days in July where our leadership team, that was comprised of teachers, special personnel, like the school psychologist and, and ABA and administrators there. And that training really gave them some expertise in what the process is and some real hands-on ways to roll this out to staff. And that's gonna be rolled out to staff on our full PD day on August twenty-fourth, district-wide. And one of those days, the team developed a common training that will take place for all staff, and then it'll be differentiated for each building. So that's, I think that's going really well. We also had some intervention implementation work that we did. I did with principals on five days in the summer, different times. We got together to really... We got together to really look at our systems for supporting struggling students, and how we can improve those systems. And, and there's some really exciting things happening that I'll keep you apprised of as the year goes on. And then we had six Google training sessions offered by Ms. Ling, and she came in at different times of the year, different times of the summer, excuse me, and offered some Google training. So there was quite a bit of, quite a bit of stuff happening, which was awesome, really, a lot of different pockets of people coming in to do work that needed to be done.
Thank you, sounds like a lot of very good work.
It was great, it was really good, good stuff, teachers did really, nice job.
Questions or comments? I have just have one question, and this is probably further out, so if you don't answer. I know that they just approved the new, they call them frameworks, well, they even call them, for the civics and history. And I just, I, I read it and I got interrupted, what is the implementation timeframe for that? Because then obviously, that's going to have to be worked in.
So we have a kind of, a flexible five-year curriculum management plan, and that's really scheduled for, not this year, but the following year, for us to look at. But we did do some English Language Arts work with secondary this year, with six, five through twelve. And some of those teachers teach humanities, so it pulled in this whole conversation about history, because they were writing integrated English and history curriculum. So, so we've had some of those conversations already, we sent someone to a summer institute in the middle school that the state put on, particularly because the biggest change is in eighth grade. So we did have someone go to that, I couldn't go because I was away. And we're continuing to get information about different professional opportunities for teachers that I funnel out. So we, we have our eye on that, and we'll be working on that later this year and going into next year.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Thank you for the update.
Sure.
And thank everyone who's been involved. All right, subcommittee reports. Academic administrative, our next meeting will be scheduled for Monday, September tenth, at nine o'clock, so we'll kick that off. Finance, we have decided that we are going to be meeting as a committee of the whole. On this agenda, you'll see, we come up with a meeting schedule, I believe that we had talked about it last, at the last meeting in June, but I copied it here as well, because we're looking to have our first school committee kickoff meeting on October twenty-ninth at five PM. Prior to that, we'll be having a multi-board meeting with the towns and, and the select boards, and hopefully, the, the FinCom and the advisory board as well to kind of say, okay, where are we? So I think we just have to get that finalized, and then those will get out there posted. And then our regular budget and finance meetings will meet in November, December, January, February, an hour before this meeting, so from five to six, we'll focus on the budget. And if we need to schedule more, we'll do so, but at least we can keep them on the same night, so we can get here and then dive in and get to work on those. And we had also agreed that we would move our budget hearing, and the budget hearing and vote that we do, so we have the two hearings, and the second one's combined with our vote, two weeks earlier than they were on the original schedule, we're looking at March sixth and March thirteenth. What I will say is that, obviously, when we meet with all of the boards, we'll discuss those dates, we'll make sure that we're all on the same page, and, and then we'll finally take the asterisk off of their tentative, when we get buy-in from everybody that those dates work. So that's what we're looking at for the finance subcommittee. Facilities, do we have an update? Other than what? We're good, perfect. Policy, next meeting scheduled for August twentieth at noon, we're doing a two-hour session to kind of kick us off for the year.
We don't have any first reads?
No, not that, we had agreed, we would do no readings tonight, we're gonna wait till September. I know you love those. Long-term planning, next meeting scheduled for August twenty-second at noon, same thing, we're gonna kick that off with a two-hour meeting and get going for the year. Templeton Elementary School, if we have an update?
Yeah, so, yeah, there's, we, I swung by there today. They are, I mean, granted, you can tell, but they are just flying. This weather has been, although we've had a lot of rain, that's, and that's been an issue, like, for everything, but they are, they are just really, I, I don't wanna, they don't like to use the word ahead. They will not use that, I'm not using it.
No, I'm not either, but I'm very optimistic about the way things go.
But they, things are, things have gone very, very well. They were worried about the metalwork, that got done in wrecked time, I mean, this is, these are the things that have happened over the summer, when they brought in the huge, you know, the steel and the girdle, they go, oh, this is gonna be an issue, all the pipe, oh my god, the pipe, this is gonna be terrible, it wasn't. So they're, we're, we're, we're moving along pretty well, and we're, you know, I, we, we update them, or they come and update us, you know, every week or so, they kind of, just kind of stop in and let us know, but they're, they're doing great. So we're talking locks, we're talking, we're talking furniture, we're talking.
Furniture, lars.
You know, just things that you're like, oh my god, it's happening, it's actually gonna be door.
The Phillipston Memorial Building Committee, this guy, so you were taking over what you're saying?
Haven't met all summer, we're waiting to hear back from the architect, about when the feasibility study?
Great, okay, all right.
And just add that he has been up here doing surveys of the building, so he's been very active.
Pull plans.
Yeah, and, yeah, so he, and I just, I got an email from him the other day, he said some preliminary plans, compared to the first real detailed architectural drawing of this building that I've seen.
In its current state, right?
Yes. He literally found drawings, you know, above lockers and things like that, and he came up and, or his crew came up and made, so they're making progress, so.
All right, I don't believe there's any correspondence to review. Our next meeting, our regularly scheduled meeting is Wednesday, September nineteenth, would be our regularly scheduled meeting. We do have a meeting scheduled for next Wednesday at six o'clock. Since we had a couple of members missing from tonight's meeting, we have our open Phillipston school committee seat. We wanted to ensure that all the members would be available to meet with the, we have four candidates. So we have scheduled that for, in Phillipston, six o'clock next Wednesday, the August twenty-second. So we'll have the interviews and hopefully do an appointment at that time and fill that empty seat. So that will happen then. And is there anything else that anyone wants to bring up before we go into executive session? Hearing nothing. We will be going into executive session now for reason number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the NDEA and UFCW. The meeting will not return into open session immediately following. I will take a motion to go into executive session. Second, Mrs. Chardier? Mrs. Triple O's? Yes, Mrs. Mattson, Ms. Horts? Mrs. Hughes says yes, so we will be adjourning from our open meeting and into executive session, thank you, everybody. I'm looking forward to a great school year.
Thank you.
Thank you.